The time is 5:00 PM and the Belton Independent Schools District Board of Trustees has now convened in a discussion meeting on Thursday, August 28, 2025. A call on board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Back to you, everyone. There being no public comments, let's move on to item three on the agenda. Closed session, consultation with attorney. It is now 5:01 PM. The Board will now go to closed meeting to consult with its attorney as allowed by Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. The time is 5:12 PM. The Board did not take any vote or other action in closed meeting and will now reconvene in open session. The next item on the agenda is item four, Level 3, FNG Parent/Student Grievance. The Board will now hear a parent complaint in accordance with Board Policy FNG Local. The parent has requested that this grievance be heard in open meeting and we will proceed accordingly. If, however, at any point during this grievance hearing, school officials determine it is necessary to share his personally identifiable information as defined by the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, we may go to a closed meeting under Texas Government Code, Section 551.0821. Additionally, the Board may convene in closed meeting subsequent to the grievance presentation to consult with its attorney under Texas Government Code, Chapter or Section 551.071. It is now 5:13 PM on Thursday, August 28, 2025. The Board of Trustees will now hear an appeal of an administrative decision to prohibit Mr. Polistrata from coming on the campus of Lake Belton High School. The superintendent has forwarded to the Board a copy of the administrative decisions at Levels 1 and 2, along with all exhibits and other material used or presented at the lower-level conferences. No new information will be considered in reaching a decision. The Board will listen to Mr. Estrada's presentation and the administration's position and they make and communicate a decision no later than the next board meeting. The Board may also take no action, in which case the last administrative decision stands as the last decision in this matter. Each party will be afforded a total of 20 minutes to present their positions. Our attorney will keep the time for both parties. If either party exhausts the allotted time before completing his or her presentation, I will call a time and permit the person speaking to complete that sentence. No extensions will be permitted. I ask that the parties identify themselves for the record before speaking and speak clearly for the recording devices. All parties will maintain order and decorum. Counsel for Mr. Estrada, are you ready to proceed, sir?
Counsel's ready.
Do you want to reserve any time, sir, for rebuttal?
I would like to reserve five minutes.
Okay.
Actually, make that four, I'm sorry. Just make it four.
Four minutes? All right, parent/student's presentation statement. Mr. Grisham, you may begin your presentation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Thank you for this opportunity to meet today and do this level grievance. I'm gonna be, you know, just be completely open and honest with you. I really don't expect much to change today. I've pretty much lost faith in this system. But we're here because we have to be, and so I'm gonna make the best argument I can on behalf of my client, and I just hope that you do the right thing. Mr. Estrada is currently trespassed from the high school property. He's got, he is a parent, he's got children in several Belton ISD schools, including the high school, and that trespass is based on what we have argued throughout this process as not only false information, but even if true, protected speech. And that is the main crux of what we've got here is several issues. We not only argued that Mr. Estrada's free speech rights are being violated by the school district, but also that the punishment is incredibly too harsh for exactly what it was, what the claims, even if true, were. We've got two separate issues here that started back at about 2020, and as everyone recalls, 2020 was such a great year, right? We all had such a wonderful time sitting in our homes and staying six feet away from each other and putting on face diapers and stuff like that. And there were a lot of people that weren't happy about that, Mr. Estrada being one of them, and that started this contentious relationship with BISD over these authoritarian policies by government at every level to force kids into masks and using chemicals on their hands to constantly clean them, and Mr. Estrada opposed that and vehemently opposed that. And what the school, you know, the school has been doing a great job of characterizing Mr. Estrada's behavior by using such descriptive words as verbally aggressive, verbally aggressive, yelled, cussed, nasty attitude, saying nasty things. I mean, literally, they thought that it was worth reporting that, is it necessary, him asking, is it really necessary to have a child touch their leg to a pole at all times during lunch to ensure they're six feet apart? Is it necessary for a child to put hand sanitizer on after already washing their hands? Then you've got, he became angry. He picked up his children, his daughter was crying, he became angry. So it started in 2020 with his daughter explaining to her father that she had been sexually assaulted. Not just sexually assaulted, but that some kid kept touching her glasses. And Mr. Estrada complained about that. He said, "I don't appreciate your staff belittling my children." All this whole thing is, if you look at that, and it's funny how there are certain things that are quoted throughout all of these papers that we've seen through the Level 1 and Level 2, and they're very specific. But what's not specific is what are these people constituting as cussing? Verbal aggression, being upset. Like, they're really good about when he's actually said something that might be controversial, they quote it in here, but yet when it comes to the specifics of using profanity, they don't. Now, one of the things I also noticed as I looked through this again is that all of these incidents were when he's picking up his children or when he's dropping off his children. He's not interrupting the school process at any point in time whatsoever. And I'm gonna argue this case as if all of these allegations are true, and we assert they are not, and we have asserted they are not this whole time, okay? But I'm gonna argue them as true because even if true, the trespass against him is unconstitutional and unlawful. And that is that, you know, you look through these, he left cussing and very angry, not a crime. His daughter just got sexually assaulted. I would hope any of you with a daughter that got sexually assaulted would be just as angry and just as verbal. That happens. It's not like he just went in there and was cussing for no reason, didn't have any reason to be upset. His daughter alleged a sexual assault. And you know what else? As far as I can tell, the school has not followed the law by reporting that sexual assault to the TEA or to the federal government as required by law. Then, so that's, you know, 2020 to 2021, he gets a trespass, and, you know, so there's one quote in here that talks about profanity. Like I said, I'm a former investigator, so when I look at these things, I'm looking at it from an investigative mind. For 21 years, I investigated terrorism, I tracked down narco-terrorists, I understand how to read things and look at papers, and I see one thing in here on one page around February where he says, and I'm just gonna apologize, but I'm gonna quote from your own words where he says, "Get your," and again alleging that this is even true, "Go get your fucking sister." And I think there was only one other instance where he said that. I thought I'd highlighted, but apparently I didn't. Oh, and then he said, "He picked up his children early." Again, this isn't, this is after school. Explaining never felt discrimination in his whole life, that he was called racial slurs by a white couple at the store, and he called them white racist bitches. So you've got two quotes there of profanity, but yet laced throughout this entire report is just, oh, he was cussing, oh, he was verbally aggressive, and yet they didn't bother to quote exactly what it was. Why? Because all he was was angry. But even if he were cussing, that's protected speech. And you might say, "But CJ, this is a school environment." I did present at the lower level several cases. This is a Fifth Circuit case, McClellan v. Katy Independent School District, and it talks about that the court has held that schools have a special interest in regulating student conduct, which, quote, "materially disrupts classwork and involves substantial disorder or invasion on the rights of others." And then here's the thing, to satisfy the standard, schools must demonstrate that the speech in question actually caused, or may reasonably be forecast to cause, a, quote, "substantial disruption or material interference with school activities." At no time anywhere, anywhere in any of the allegations in all of these pages of Mr. Estrada's conduct, does it say anything about a, quote, "substantial disruption" or "material interference with school activities." You know what he interfered with? People's egos. That's what he interfered with. And then in Bethel School District v. Frazier, there was a case here about, you know, kids going to an assembly and making sexual references and all of that, and the court found, and this is a Supreme Court case, and for the record, this is, again, Bethel School District v. Frazier, and I provided the citations to opposing counsel. The first, this is a quote, "The First Amendment guarantees wide freedom in matters of adult public discourse. A sharply divided court upheld the right to express an anti-draft viewpoint in a public place, albeit in terms highly offensive to most citizens." This was the Cohen v. California case. "It does not follow, however, that simply because the use of an offensive form of expression may not be prohibited to adults, making that speaker, making what the speaker considers a political point, the same latitude must be permitted to children in a public school." There is a different standard between adults and children, and that standard on both cases still has to result in a material disruption. That simply did not happen here. Then we move to the current issue, and the current issue is, oh, and by the way, on that sexual assault, the person who did the investigation did not even interview his daughter. What kind of investigation doesn't interview the victim of the crime? And in this case, they didn't, and so, and you wonder, why in the world is Mr. Estrada upset? What could possibly get him so upset? Well, one, his daughter was sexually assaulted; two, they didn't even do a proper investigation. I think that's warranted. Then we move to recently. And his son allegedly made a racial slur towards a student, but even looking at all of the reports here, everything is contradicted. You've got some students saying, "No, he never said that," and you've got some students saying, "Yes, he did say that." Again, let's assume that he, and I'm not gonna say this, but let's just assume he did say the, quote, "N-word with the hard R," right? And let's even say that he said it in a disparaging manner, not in a passive manner, you know, like, "Yo, what's up?" whatever, or, "N-what?", you know, that kind of thing. Let's just assume it was even disparaging. Under Texas law, that words alone do not justify violence. Even if you use fighting words, I can't hit you just because you're in my face calling me names, calling my wife names, calling me "incrack" or whatever you wanna do, right? I can't go and punch you. It's not a defense to prosecution that they incited me with words. And yet, the school found that contrary to state law, which requires alternative education when a student assaults somebody, that it was justified because his son used a disparaging term. I find it hard to believe that if the state law and criminal code doesn't justify words as a justification for violence, that the school district would teach kids that it's okay to hit somebody, sucker punch them, if they use a word that you don't like or they use language that you don't like, and yet that's exactly what this school district did. You know, we just had a murder in this school district because of bullying, and I can see why now. We've got kids getting sexually assaulted and no investigations are being done. We've got kids being assaulted and no investigations being done, or an investigation being done, and then the school says, "Well, he used a bad word, so we're gonna give him a law suspension." Instead of what the law says, which when there's an assault, that kid goes to alternative education. That did not happen here. And you know what happened? He got upset about it. I would too. My kid used to be bullied, you know what I did? I did the exact same thing he did. I didn't get trespassed. The principal just had to sit and listen to me cuss at her for not taking care of my son and not doing what it was. Finally, there was, the way that this is reported is also false. There is a report in here that says that Mr. Estrada told his son that to deal with it on-site. There it is, right here. "Mr. Estrada began to exit. He turned to his son and stated, quote, 'They aren't gonna do anything to this kid, so on-site.'" He repeated "on-site" several times, asking his son if he understood, to which his son nodded affirmatively. You know what really happened? What really happened was his son said, "If they're not going to do anything about a kid assaulting you, if that kid assaults you again, you handle it on-site. You defend yourself." And I understand there's gonna be some, but that is not a call for violence. He was doing what's called a conditional threat. And even a conditional threat, if I were to say to this Board, "If you don't vote a certain way, I'm gonna," I'm not gonna say that, "I'm gonna cut your grass," right? That's not a threat that I'm gonna cut your grass because you have to do something first. It's conditional, it's predatory, it's preparatory. And so you can't get me for like, but if I say, "Right now, I'm going to cut your grass," and I've got a lawnmower in my hand, then that's something that can be actioned upon. And that's exactly what happened here. Mr. Estrada told his son, "Since they're not doing anything about this, if the kid touches you again, then you handle it on-site. You defend yourself." Because obviously, the people at this school district aren't gonna help you. And you know what? I did the same thing to my son when he was in middle school, because I told the principal, "I'm telling you right now, if that kid touches my kid again, he's gonna deck him and he's gonna knock him out." And she said, "Well, he's gonna be suspended." I said, "Okay, but don't expect me to punish him when he gets home. I'm gonna throw him a party. You handle it or we'll handle it," kind of thing. And it's very simple. If you don't want Mr. Estrada's kid to deal with the kid that's assaulting him on-site, do something to stop the assaults. It's that simple. But you don't do it by trespassing a parent who is upset that his daughter has been sexually assaulted and the school district did nothing about it, his son was assaulted and the school district did nothing about it, except blaming the kid, or him, for using a racial term. Okay, get it? If that's even true, yeah, go ahead, I schooled, the three days in-school suspension. But you know what the school did? The school gave Mr. Estrada's son three days' suspension for using a word, though not true, and gave the kid who assaulted him, sucker punched him from behind, three days' in-school suspension. Now you tell me why he shouldn't be upset about that. And so to deal with an irate parent, instead of just trying to deal with the problem, and I understand, us veterans, sometimes we're hard to, we're hard to deal with, you know? We've seen it all, we've done it all, and we don't have time to flower our speech up and, you know, protect people's feelings and all that. I understand that. But as government officials, which every single member of BISD is a government official, as government officials, you have to expect and accept that you're gonna hear things you don't wanna hear, and you're gonna probably see things you don't wanna see. But nowhere, nowhere in this has Mr. Estrada ever made threats? Has Mr. Estrada ever caused anyone? He never said or did anything other than people's feelings, like, "Oh, I just don't feel safe." Why? Because he's using bad words. He's never done anything. He's not a violent person, except when this country sends him to do violent things. But he's not a violent person. He's never made threats. He's used words. And words, unless they're, well, even if they're fighting words, they don't justify, only fighting words you can censor, you know? There's certain types of speech that you can censor. Pornography is one of them, defamation and fighting words, incitement to violence, things like that. So there are certain exceptions to speech. None of those apply here, and yet the school wants to tell you guys, and I'm hoping that you fix this problem.
You're at 15.
Thank, oh, I, okay, then let me stop. I'll reserve my remaining time. I think I put the wrong time on here. Oh, I put 16? Oh, okay.
Yeah, you wanted to say 14.
Oh, I meant 15. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot I went to 16. Thank you for that. So anyway, I would, I really hope that the school board will do the right thing here, lift his trespass. And one of the things we said at the Level 2, the Level 2 hearing, is Mr. Estrada knows throughout this process that maybe he needs to speak a little bit differently, and he's made that, he made that commitment at the Level 2 that, hey, you lift my trespass, I'm gonna, even I don't have to, I will comport myself in a more professional manner so that I can take part in my kid's education. And he's willing to do that again here, lift the trespass, and we're committing that he's not even gonna use the kinds of, even though it's protected speech, he's willing to act more professionally with the staff if something happens again. And I'll reserve my coordinates.
Thank you, Mr. Grisham. Moving on to the administration's presentation statement, Mr. Zell and Dr. Spearman, do you wish to reserve any time for rebuttal?
Let's say three minutes for rebuttal.
Sir, you may proceed.
Thank you, Board. You've just heard from Mr. Estrada's counsel in this matter. Let me be abundantly clear from the outset. This is not a case about silencing a parent. It's not a case about ignoring a parent's concerns over the course of a five-year period. And it's not about disagreement between the school's objectives and a parent's objectives in raising their children. This administration is aware of the fact that parents and educators are partners in educating children, and disagreement is something that this district invites in order to help educate the kids at Belton ISD. This case is not about disagreement. This case is, this case is about when disagreement turns into intimidation and threats. And over the course of the next 15 minutes, I'm going to present as much information as I came to you about the way that Mr. Estrada has interacted with your employees in this district over the past five years. And I represent this Board that that behavior is completely inappropriate. So this is about that line between disagreement and intimidation and threats, and Mr. Estrada's conduct on April 2 of 2025 this year crossed that line. He entered into your Lake Belton High School campus. He demeaned your staff. He yelled at front office receptionist, who had nothing to do with the disciplinary incident that Mr. Grisham was just informing you about. He demeaned your high school principal. He threatened your security guard, and he asked an administrator of your district whether or not she feared for her life. Compare that against the information that Mr. Grisham has just shared with you and consider that for a moment. That is not advocacy, and that is not protected speech, as much as Mr. Grisham would have you believe it is the case. Those are threatening and intimidating statements from Mr. Estrada that had the effect of making your staff feel unsafe in their job. They went home on April 2, fearful for their life, based on the conduct of Mr. Estrada that day. So let's talk about the April 2 incident. We're gonna talk a lot more about the previous incidents, to the fullest extent that I can. But on April 2, Mr. Estrada entered the school building before the campus had even opened for the day, visibly upset and agitated, yelling and confronting your front desk, receptionist, and other members of the front desk, front office staff. And as Mr. Grisham pointed out, he was upset about incident, an incident that occurred the previous day regarding the alleged assault of his son. I'm glad that we can agree that the documentation that very least indicates that his son's part in a physical altercation with the other student was related to his use of the N-word. And after an investigation by Kelly Dodd, who's an assistant principal on Lake Belton High School's campus, it was substantiated that Mr. Estrada's son used that term in reference to the person who hit him in the face. So there was that physical altercation. Following that investigation, the district did determine to assign Mr. Estrada's son with a three-day in-school suspension, which fueled the tide wave that occurred on April 2. An important point on this that the administration wants to make clear is that in the disciplining of students, the administration, campus behavioral coordinator, has the obligation and the discretion to consider mitigating factors in assessing disciplinary consequences for each of the students who engage in this type of conduct. So I want that to be on the record, and I certainly would like, if you need further clarification on that physical altercation, there was an investigation done by the campus which indicates that a racial slur was used in reference to another student, which led to the physical altercation. I think that is a very important point that Mr. Grisham has glossed over. In addition, now we're denying the fact that the student ever said the N-word in the first place, but during the Level 2 conference, if you were to go back and listen to the recording, you will see that counsel and the parent in that sense indicated that, admitted that his son actually did use the N-word, they just disagreed in the form in which it was used. So on the morning of April 2, Mr. Estrada entered Lake Belton High School, was immediately agitated, irritable, and only escalated his conduct from there. Your staff was visibly distressed. Mr. Estrada's conduct on Belton ISD property is no secret, which resulted in some of your staff who were in the front office retreating to other parts of the building so they could avoid being a part of this confrontation with Mr. Estrada. And to give you a frame of reference with how loud and confrontational this was in the front office, Ms. Hanjin was having a meeting elsewhere in the building with Ben Smith, and they were able to hear the confrontation from the front office, and Ms. Hanjin reported to the front office to ensure that everything was going properly on her campus. The very first words that Mr. Estrada shared with Ms. Hanjin, who you all know is a female principal, but for the record, she's a female principal, was, "Oh, you must be the school counselor or the school nurse. Which one is it?" We had, at that point, Ms. Hanjin confirmed that she was the principal for the campus and that she had relevant authority to speak with him about the issues that made him upset. And at that point, Mr. Estrada's, he only escalated his behavior at that stage, continued raising his voice, yelling directly at Ms. Hanjin, yelling repeatedly to other members of your front office staff. Ms. Hanjin, at that stage, decided that this was not an appropriate forum for Mr. Estrada to be yelling loudly at staff and herself, so she attempted to move this conversation into a private conference room in which they could continue that discussion. During the course of this confrontation, he repeatedly cut off Ms. Hanjin. A security guard reported to the incident, and they also needed to call the district's SRO to help intervene in the situation, just given Mr. Estrada's history and given the way that he was carrying himself that morning. At some point in the confrontation, Mr. Estrada decided it would be a good idea to dismiss Ms. Hanjin from the conversation and directed her to step away so that the men could talk about this business involving his son and his disciplinary conduct. Throughout the course of the time in the private conference room, as you will see in the witness statements prepared by your principal, the AP, the security guard's statement, I think, is importantly, important to this point, and I believe you can find that on page 190 in your binders. 186, apologies. You will see through the course of those statements that Mr. Estrada was warned multiple times that his conduct is not appropriate for the school setting, and he was pleaded to by district and campus administration to de-escalate his behavior so they could continue to have this conversation. So not only did he demean your female high school principal, his son was also present during this confrontation, and he told his son multiple times to handle the conflict on-site. And I think Mr. Grisham framed it in a different way than what stands out to me in the documentation of your staff contemporaneously, but that is understood to me, and then I believe the administration as well through levels of investigation, as immediate physical retaliation. I believe the student was sent back to class. I think he had a JROTC event later that day, so he went back to class after receiving that instruction from Mr. Estrada. The district, I think, reasonably determined that that was an incitement to violence and was specifically putting the other student in harm's way on school property. When the district intervened in that statement, you will see in the documentation that Mr. Estrada said, "Okay, how about we take the other student out of class, bring him to the back conference room, and the two students can fight it out, and we can settle it that way." The district, as you'll see in the documentation, denied that request and reminded Mr. Estrada to de-escalate his conduct at that point in time. And Mr. Estrada said, "Fine, we'll take it into our own hands. I know the home address of the student who attacked my son. I know where his mom works, and I will take matters into my own hands if that's what it takes to get some justice here." And I will let the Board make their own inferences on what exactly he meant in that setting. So at that point in time, Ms. Hanjin decided to remove Mr. Estrada from the private conference room, given the fact that this is no longer productive conversation. He's advocating for future violence toward another student of the district and intimating that he'll take matters into his own hands if he needs to. So when the security guard approached Mr. Estrada, as you'll see in the documentation and specifically on page 190, is that security guard's statement. 186. 186 is the page that you can find, the security guard's statement, where he expresses that Mr. Estrada bowed up to him and said, "I am bigger and stronger than you. It took Belton Police Department three officers to take me down." It took Belton Police Department three officers to take me down. You don't stand a chance, essentially is, is what was reported by the security guard. And this is corroborated by other statements by witnesses at that point in time. Um, near the end of the confrontation, I'm, I'm not exactly sure when, but the documentation reveals that, uh, he asked Ms. Hanjin whether or not she feared for her life, which I take is, is a menacing comment and a menacing question in, in the context of yelling and demeaning someone for the past half hour, you ask them a question directed at whether or not they fear for their life. Um, your staff, I, I think reasonably so, top to bottom, uh, considered Mr. Estrada's conduct on April second to be threatening. And they felt that, um, that, that they were at risk, a substantial risk of harm by Mr. Estrada's hand with his continued presence on the district. Um, I do wanna note that once they vacated the private conference room, once Ms. Hanjin shut down the meeting and said, this is no longer productive, and you have not de-escalated your behavior as we've repeatedly requested, uh, they moved the conversation in the foyer as they escorted Mr. Estrada out, where his conduct only escalated from that point forward. So, uh, coming out of that, that incident, Ms. Hanjin recommended a district-wide multi-year trespass order as necessary for the protection of her staff and students. Um, and everybody in this room, the step foot in a front office of the school, at any given point in time, and if Mr. Estrada was at the district for an hour, I guarantee you that there were students present, um, who, who overheard and who were subjected to Mr. Estrada's comments during that altercation. Um, but the story doesn't begin on April second. This is just the most recent of extremely troubling pattern of behavior that we've seen from Mr. Estrada, as you've been able to see in Jennifer Connor's chronology uh, over the course of a two-year period, um, in which Mr. Grisham touched on briefly with regard to sexual assault allegation. Uh, but April second wasn't an isolated bad day for Mr. Estrada. This is a pattern of conduct that occurred over a five-year period, and all of the incidents that you're going to find in your binders, the documentation that your administration collected over years and years and years, indicates that his behavior on April second conforms exactly with that, that, um, that previously heard on different, um, uh, Belton ISD campuses. I wanted to, to, to mention, by the way, because we're getting into COVID territory, and, and how dare this district try to stand down a parent who's concerned about the use of chemicals and wearing of masks and different COVID protocols? Um, I would direct your attention to page one seventy of your binders to kind of give you an idea of the type of rhetoric that Mr. Estrada was engaging in surrounding COVID protocol in, in early two thousand, uh, two thousand and twenty. Um, but once you look through the chronology prepared by, uh, Ms. Connor and corroborated by witness statements throughout that entire period, uh, Mr. Estrada would oftentimes come to school banging on windows, yanking on locked doors that he was not meant to go inside, forcing staff to secure students, um, and to call district police to get them to intervene in his con- in, uh, with his conduct. Uh, you will find multiple, and I would say, I'm not sure if you'd ever find a report in that chronology where he did not engage in, in yelling at your staff. And most of the time, that yelling isn't directed at anybody who has any type of ability to remedy the, the concerns that he has. Oftentimes, this is your front office staff, uh, your, your district clerks, who really just have no authority in, in fixing Mr. Estrada's alleged problems. Um, you'll find in the documentation that a teacher was genuinely concerned that Mr. Estrada was going to shoot her, and she was fairly certain that he had a gun. She feared for her life. Um, now, we talked a little bit about profanity in Mr. Grisham's presentation, and how it's so vague. Open up a random page of Jennifer Connor's chronology, and you will find at least a dozen cuss words. There's, there's no vagueness, there's no ambiguity in the district's documentation with respect to the exact words that Mr. Estrada said. Uh, in the spirit of the board, I'll only mention a couple of them. Um, these are words that Mr. Estrada has used against your employees at Belton Independent School District, uh, since twenty twenty. He has called them fucking white bitches. He has called them fucking cunts. And he's called them white racist bitches, among a slew of other names. He's done this in the presence of students. He has used racial slurs, not necessarily against, um, district employees, but in reference to himself with regard to altercations that he had outside of the school. But he used those in the presence of school employees and school students. That is something that you're going to glean from this documentation, if you haven't already. Um, there was another incident, and I, I don't recall the specific page, but I'm sure we can, we can locate that if the district needs to see, if the board needs to see it. Um, where, you know, he, he threatened to cap those who crossed him, which, again, I'll let the board make your own inferences. Um, so that's all the time that I have to go through each of those specific incidents. I want to address the, uh, the standard under thirty-seven point one zero five.
Yeah, sixteen minutes.
Perfect. Your counsel is undoubtedly gonna walk you through the different prongs in, in which, uh, an administrator of your district is authorized to exclude certain individuals from district property. Um, and those are cases where they've been issued a verbal warning, and that person either poses a substantial risk of harm to any particular individual or, um, excludes someone who behaves inappropriately after a verbal warning. I would say, based on what I've shared with you and what you can read clearly from the documentation, that each of those prongs were independently satisfied in this process. The, the, the exclusion of Mr. Estrada, uh, was in accordance with, uh, chapter thirty-seven of the Education Code. With regard to his free speech claim, uh, you know, Mr. Estrada is, uh, his counsel are deliberately trying to frame this as a First Amendment case. It absolutely isn't. I'm gonna let your counsel walk you through that, but it's not protected speech. And when you're having a private conversation in a private room of the district's property about your student's discipline, that is not considered a public forum or a limited public forum. Federal legal authorities are clear on this issue. There, the law is on the district's side with respect to the free speech claim. With regard to the Leukelenen, uh, VKD ISD case, um, that standard that applies to students is completely distinct from that that applies to adults. Um, there's this bullying narrative. Cory Kratic offered, um, after the April first incident with, uh, the other student to conduct a bullying investigation, which was denied. Even if it had been bullying, no parent is entitled to direct their child to physically retaliate against another. We offered that again at level two, and that was likewise denied. With regard to the sexual assault allegations, this is really difficult to talk about. But I think it necess- necessitates some conversation. Uh, just very quickly, uh, I wanna make two points abundantly clear. I'm just gonna keep going. Um, I wanna make two points abundantly clear. First, the district has never been provided or has never uncovered evidence that Mr. Estrada's daughter was sexually assaulted or sexually harassed. Two, uh, the district has never been provided with information by the Estradas alleging that their daughter had been sexually assaulted. An investigation took place by Ms. Jennifer Connor, uh, following the statements made by Mr. Estrada. And you can find that on pages one fifty-one and one fifty-two of the chronology in your binder. Um, I wanna be really clear. Uh, Mr. Estrada picked up his daughter from school one day. She was visibly distressed. He immediately commanded an audience with the principal, which was provided to him. He wasn't able to provide any sort of, um, information regarding what had happened to his daughter. He denied Ms. Hanjin's, or, um, Ms. Connor's ability to speak with his daughter, which is why we didn't further investigate and interview the daughter, uh, moving forward. Uh, the very next day, the principal engaged in an investigation. She spoke with a teacher. She spoke with a male student who was alleged to have touched her inappropriately, which the only conduct that was substantiated through that investigation was that he, he, he touched her glasses without her consent. This is not a Title IX issue. This is not something that the district is required to report to T E A. Um, again, a- after level-one grievance, we offered to provide, um, an investigation, and this past week, we, we offered to go through that process again, and that was denied. Uh, Board, Belton ISD has been more than fair. We've narrowed the trespass order, we offered new investigations, and this administration has provided the Estradas chance after chance to look for you. Each time, they refuse. What this administration, the people that you pay good money to do these, these types of things, what they cannot refuse to do is to protect their students and staff. But there be no doubt, Belton ISD will not be intimidated into backing away from threats of litigation. It appears that that's the direction we're heading in. At the end of the day, um, it's about protecting your people. And that's all that the administration has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yezel.
That is our four minutes.
Four minutes. Mr. Grisham, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
May proceed, sir.
All right, so the first thing I wanna make, th- this is the Texas Education Code thirty-seven dot zero zero six. Subject to the requirements of section thirty-seven dot zero zero nine, a student shall be removed from class and placed in disciplinary alternative education program if the student, subparagraph two B, engages in conduct that contains the elements of the offense of assault. Not assault with an explanation that maybe he used a bad word. Assault. Why? Why does the Texas Education say that? Because words are not a defense to assault. They're not a defense to assault in criminal court. They're not an offense to assault here in the school. So there's that. Um, the second thing is, and, and there, and I don't know what page you guys have or what I have, but I, I do know that it's, it's labeled July fourth, twenty twenty. And they report themselves. Mr. Estrada saying, we're having issues with students taking and/or touching my daughter's glasses, and with a student named Blacklock touching my daughter inappropriately. He just said they never, that he never reported that. Yeah, he did. They even said that he reported it. It's right there. The next thing, th- this is, this is what I'm talking about. This, this is the, the problem that you have with your staff right now, and this is why we have so many problems. Because Mr. Estrada's never, not only has he never carried a gun into a school, he's never threatened to kill somebody. And this idea that just comes out of thin air, oh, I thought he was gonna shoot me. Where, that doesn't come from anywhere in here. And, and in fact, I think they made the case for us that everything that we're talking about here, rhetoric about COVID. Oh, okay, let's, let's go ahead and kick him out. He, you know, give him a CT. He has rhetoric about COVID. Um, calling or demeaning staff, again, even if true, demeaning staff. And actually, your own report here, uh, talks about the fact that he doesn't, he didn't say that no women, he said he was talking to the security guy, and had was having a man-to-man conversation and told her to leave. It had nothing to do with the fact that he doesn't want any women in there. He was talking to, and this is a man-to-man conversation is what he was saying. That's in your own report as well. This idea about takes three, three PD. Everything that your faculty and staff are writing are just gross exaggerations. Everything that was just argued. But he says that, uh, so Mr., so the security guard bows up to him, bows up to my client, not the other way around, because he's being loud. So the security guard bows up to him because he's being loud. And that's when Mr. Estrada says, he was bigger and stronger than me, and it would take three Belton PD officers to take him down. That wasn't a threat. That was a response to him being bowed up on. And now, let's also go back to the other, uh, statements.
About one more minute.
Yes, ma'am. This idea of, I bet you're afraid for your life now? If you look at that referencing a prior CT, he's making fun of the fact that they're giving him a CT because I bet you're claiming you fear for your life. Not that you should fear for your life. He's saying, oh, I bet you're gonna, right, here's his own statement. I bet you're afraid for your life now, aren't you? And that's why you're issuing a CT. Because they're trying to justify this stuff. They're making this stuff up all in their heads. They're making little mountains out of molehills. And everything that they just said, yes, this is protected speech. Um, behavior does, I'm sorry where I'm at. Uh, anyway, they talk about Mr. Estrada's history. Mr. Estrada's history is a history of using language that does not, quote, substantially disrupt or materially interfere with the school and activities because this did not happen during school. No classes were disrupted, no jobs weren't able to get done. Therefore, it doesn't meet the elements, and the speech is protected. And I ask that you lift the trespass. Oops.
Thank you, Mr. Grisham. I now declare this complaint and appeal closed. The board will now consult with its attorney and close meeting in accordance with Texas Department Code, section five fifty-one point zero seven one. The time is six thirty-four P M. The board did not take any vote or other action, and close meeting will now reconvene in open session. The board has heard the complaint of Mr. Estrada. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the board uphold the level-two decision.
Do I have a second? Mr. Flor? All those who favor, please raise your hand. That passes six to zero. The complaint proceeding before the Board of Trustees is not concluded. This meeting is adjourned at six thirty-five P M.